I have not waited on that because I-
I will call a special meeting of the Board of Alderman to order at 6:46. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Patricia Pizzi and Alderwoman Kelly will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Phyllis will guard with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the court please call a roll?
Alderman Willscher.
Here.
Alderman Gidge. Alderman Harriet Gathwright.
Present.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Cleve.
Here.
Alderman Laws.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderwoman Elise Gola.
Present.
Alderman Tenza.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman McCarthy.
Present.
We have fourteen members present.
Also President Mayor James Donches, Corporation Counsel Stephen Bolton. Communications?
Communication from Brian S. McCarthy relative to special Board of Alderman meeting.
If there are no objections, the communication will be accepted and placed on file. Presentation, we have a presentation from Candace Shi, owner of Veoride. Mayor Donches, did you want to introduce that?
Yes. Is this on?
Yep.
Yeah, well, thank you very much, Mr. President, members of the board, for holding this special meeting because we're going to present a very fun project to you tonight. And that is the bike that you see before you, the Veoride bike. And you're going to hear from Sarah Marshant, Julie Chismas, who's been working on this project, whose sweater she color coordinated with the Veoride bike. So we're really happy about that. As well as Candace Shi from the Veoride Company, one of the founders. So this is a project that we began working on, I think, last fall. I went up to a mayor's conference, the Innovative Mayor's Conference or whatever, in Burlington, Vermont, and saw that there are these dockless bike-riding, public bike-riding, public-sharing bike-riding companies. And as our staff and everybody began to talk with the various companies and investigate this project, it seemed like something would work really well for Nashua. Now, you've seen in many of the big cities, the prior model for this was the dock, dock bike, where the bikes dock at one location and you have to ride them to another specific location in order to use them. And you, in that model, you pay by the distance or by the hour, but you are tied to fixed locations. With the dockless bike, and this is the Veoride bike here, and Candace will show you all the details. What happens is it is activated on your phone by an app. You unlock the phone, you just take the bike down off the kickstand, you ride it wherever you want, and then you leave it. And the new person can pick up the bike by using their app and to see where all of the bikes are. Now, I think Candace is going to tell you that they're going to introduce about three hundred bikes, they think, at the beginning. It's a very, it's very tricky to make sure that you get the right number of bikes. Not too many, not too few. If there are too few, no one can find them. If there are too many, then, you know, the company doesn't do well with it. Costs a dollar or fifty cents to ride it for a very short period of time. And this particular company has a very nice feature that you can continue to rent the bike. If you go to like a bakery or you want to make a quick stop, you can stop the bike, kind of lock it, but continue to rent it and then get it when you come out so that no one will take the bike while you're inside. In any event, it's been a great, really fun project to work on. It's been fun to see all of the companies and get to know Veoride. Right now, Boston is about to enter into a multi-municipality, dozen or so municipalities, project like this. So, but we will be the first in New Hampshire to, first city, I think there are twenty-five bikes up in Henniker, but there, we will be the first city in New Hampshire to adopt this program, which we think we can get off the ground by June 2nd. But to give you all of the details, who's going to go next? Sarah Marshant, Community Development Director, is going to kind of get into more of the details.
Thank you so much. Just real quickly, this is intended as a first mile, last mile project to really help coordinate with our transit system and for the, to allow for travel downtown and in the main region. So this has been a partnership with the Department of Public Works and Economic Development as well as the transit system. So we're really excited to bring Candace up and let her give you the actual intro on the product.
Thank you, Mayor and Sarah, for the warm introduction. And good evening, Board of Alderman. It's my pleasure to be here to present Veoride Bike Share Program here. And my name is Candace Shi. I'm VP of Business Development and one of the co-founder of the company. And on behalf of the company, please let me allow to introduce the one-stop bike-share solution to the city of Nashua. So the main part of the presentation will run around like fifteen minutes. And after the presentation, we'll do a demonstration around five minutes. So after that, so we are welcome for any question or, so yeah, just raise your hand. We are like, we are here to take all the things. So without further ado, let's get started. So Veoride is a dockless bike-share program which contains high-quality adaptable technology. We provide one-stop bike-share solution for our partner. And then we provide like adaptable technologies, including software, hardware, and bike type because we handles everything in-house, from designing, engineering, and then development. So to rent a Veoride bike is really simple. All you need to do is to download the app and then scan a QR code on the handlebars and then on the lock, you are good to go. The whole process takes less than three seconds. We also develop different new features to meet our riders' needs. Before you ride the bike, you can reserve it. Not, not, sometimes like reservation is not enough because, like Mayor said, when you want to run to the like grocery shop or coffee shop, you want to do a short stop and you're afraid that your bike may be taken when you come out. So we have the whole feature which ensure that you have a nice ride home as well. And then in the app, you can see all the trip summary, including all the costs and miles you have ridden and car reburned in the app. And we also encourage two-way communications between us and our riders. So riders can submit their concerns, issue, or any problem feedbacks about the bikes through the app. And our general manager here locally will address any issue arise. And then we also can communicate with the riders by sending out notification. For example, tomorrow will be snow pretty heavily, please like ride safely. Some notes like that through the inbox. Next thing is gamification and fun feature from Veoride. So it's called Lucky Bike. So when the bike has been idled more than forty-eight hours, the bike will be automatically become Lucky Bike. It's like Pokemon, which is pretty popular among our riders. When you find a Lucky Bike and you ride it to designated lucky area, you can get two free riding coupons. So this gamification system helps us to increase the rider engagement and also help us to do the redistribution of the bike. And this feature potentially, we can collaborate with the local business because we can set their like parking lot as lucky zone to encourage riders to drop off the bikes there, maybe just go to the restaurant of the local business. So, and different like feature for our operation is a geofence feature. So we can set out a broad geofence service area to include the whole city of Nashua. And we also can like create satellite area. So if people ride it, ride our bike from Nashua to Boston, people can lock the bike, but they will still be get charged. So we will have notifications that, please ride the bike and park it back to Nashua to avoid further charges. And the same methodology applies for no parking area because we know some places like fire department, we don't want people to park in front of that. So we can mark the map of that location as no parking zones to encourage people not to park it or they will be get charged. So it's a way to regulate the parking and then encourage people to ride and park responsibly. So the next thing, very importantly, is the data. One of our goal is to work with the community to improve the bike infrastructure and then build a biking culture in here locally. So we share all the data we gathered through the bike-share system, share with the planning department and infrastructure department to analyze the heat map, the start point and end point of each trip to analyze our usage to gauge if we need to increase fleet or decrease fleet or even switch the fleet type. As we mentioned, we might have fat tire to be due in this winter time. That'll be really fun. So here is our like structure for our team. In the local, in the local team, we will have different multiple positions available for local people. We'll have one general manager who is overseeing the marketing team and operation team. And the local team is supported by the central team for its customer service, business development, and engineering. And if there's any question or raised from the riders or the city, our GM is the local point of contact. So the GM not only responsible for managing the operation, daily operation, he will, this person will also be responsible for marketing and communication. We have, we will arrange like different marketing activities to get people, get residents into the bike-share program, know how to maintain a healthy lifestyle. And then we also will do the safety education with combining with some local events activity together. Last thing is that we have a toll-free number twenty-four seven available for people to call in to ask question. They also can submit ticket in the app. So our GM will adjust it within a two-hour timeframe. Next thing is the operation maintenance. We have set schedule for people, for our operation talents to go out to do a full daily patrol and swap of the route and do pre-chat for our bicycle. And at the end of day, our mechanics will come in and our general manager will analyze the usage and decide what's the distribution plan looks like for tomorrow and next week. So lot of people, I know we just get out from winter, right, like one or two weeks ago. So we have a lot of people asking about the winter operation, like questions. We all know that the winter will reduce our usage and we don't want to have lots of IO bikes sitting outside. So Veoride will be responsible for like retrieving the bikes and reducing the fleet size during the winter. And we are flexible to work because we know each year, the winter, the landscape is different. And we also will collaborate with the city to respond to some snow and ice events and try to send our riders' notification on where or when they, it's not recommended to bike and park. So here is the pricing for our riders. As you see, the basic plan is fifty cents every fifteen minutes. And you can also purchase monthly and yearly plan. As you can see, students, faculty, and staffs, they can get discounted price for the membership. So here is how timeline looks like for the program. In the May, we will do program planning and our team will come here to do recruiting, to do marketing activities and set up operations. And on June 2nd, we are planning to launch on that day and deploy twenty bikes and continuously doing marketing campaign and safety education. So after analyzing the first two or three months usage, we can decide, sit down with the city to take a look at the data and the usage to decide if we are going to increase the fleet size or increase the fleet type. So overall, Veoride is a smart dockless bike-share system. We don't charge anything from the city and we provide a whole customization and adaptive plan for the partner. We have smart operation, our pricing is affordable, and our data is welcome to share with the city for its planning purpose. Thank you so much for attention. And I will do a quick demo for you all. So as you see the bike, the bike is three-speed internal Shimano gear hub and there is a bell on the left side. And we have like tail light, front light, solar panel here to power the smart lock as well. We also have reflective sidewalk which helps like people to ride it at night pretty safely. So if you want to ride a bicycle, all you need to do is to scan the QR code on here or here and you will automatically unlock in a second. And all the bikes are made of aluminum alloy and ninety-five percent of them are reclaimable. So it's very economic friendly and environmentally friendly as well. And it's a lightweight bike. It weighs around thirty-five pounds. And then, yeah, it would be the feature I have. It has a key stand which maintain like upright standing to have a pretty good presentation for the city as well. So awesome. Let's conclude my presentation. Any questions from the board, the city, or anyone?
Alderman Dowd.
You said something about the electronic assist bikes.
Yes.
Or motorized. Are those more expensive or the same price?
They, they have like different price plan.
Mm-hmm.
So yeah, if I can have the, thank you. So our price plan for the e-bikes would be you need like one dollars to unlock the bike and then every minute it counts like a flat rate for it. So instead of every fifteen minutes is fifty cents. Yeah, because the e-bikes needs more manpower to do the charging and do the switching the battery to make sure everything is working.
Is it easy to adjust that seat?
Yes. So it's really easy to adjust the seat here. And the seat has the indication for the height. So I'm five-six, so I, here is my height. Awesome. Oh, it's my own hand. Awesome. That's good. Any other questions?
Alderman Laws.
I was in Amsterdam two years ago. And first of all, the entire city is built around bicycles. It's beautiful. But it's kind of sport for the locals to throw bikes in the canals. What happens when patrons get out of the bars at night and someone stupidly throws one of these bikes into a canal? Who's responsible for that?
Yep. We don't want to see it and I'm sure our GM will swim in the river and get it back. Just a bad joke.
So.
So we have customer service line and like our GM number will be distributed to the city member so they can answer, this person can answer all the calls to take care of emergency. So if bikes are thrown into the river, we will send our team to address this emergency directly.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Alderman Jenny.
So you had me at no cost to the city. This is, this is a great idea. So if I take the bus home and I can take one of these bikes from downtown, put it on the bus, and then when I-
We don't recommend that.
When I get to my bus stop, I can take the bike and ride it home and leave it there outside my house?
So we don't recommend people to put their bike on the bus, but in the ideal world, like when you get out of the bus, there will be one bike awaiting for you. So that's the reason why we need to analyze the data to see like how many bikes we need to feed people's demands. And then like how, like where we need to distribute it.
But if, so if I take the bus and at the bus stop, there happens to be a bike waiting, I can drive that home and just leave it outside my house?
Yes, on the sidewalk, furniture area.
Alderman Tenza.
So just as part of our analysis of where we're going to deploy bikes, we're looking at the transit stop data and our highest ridership transit stops. So we hope to deploy bikes at those stops that have high ridership. So there will be some there so people can use them from that point. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay.
This may be a question for Director Marshant, but so who do you see as the market for these bikes? And are you in other smaller cities with less than a hundred thousand people? And how long have you been there? How well has the program gone?
So yeah, so the first question, we see the bike-share program can be served for several purposes. The one is for commuting. So people have the last mile like demands. We can use the bike-share to meet their demands. And the second is the recreational purpose. We know Nashua has great resource of trails. So we can use the bikes to be used, be put in the trail system to like encourage people to ride it during the weekend or holidays. And right now, we are operating in Indiana, Illinois, Kansas, city of like Henniker, and then expand to Texas as well. So some similar-sized city would be Lawrence, Kansas, or Pella, Iowa, or West Lafayette, Indiana. So right now, in the college town, the response is pretty good because in a lot of like university, parking is a pain. So bike-share is pretty well adopted. And in the commuting city, bike-share actually is pretty well adopted, like in the downtown area. And from the parking lot to the work and then from the work to the restaurant is the most popular route people are taking.
Tenza, you have a follow-up?
A different question. I still don't understand. So let's say I'm downtown, I hop on a bike, bring it back to my house, say, okay, I'm not using it, stick it in my garage for the night. And in the morning, hop back on. What would stop me from doing that?
Yes. So our system, it has alarm. So we can notify it's within someone's garage. So it may trigger, the alarm goes on, which you don't want to hear it over the night.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes. Downtown, we have some very popular spots and I can see a whole bunch of bikes at that particular area. Will your company be providing bike racks or anything to the most popular destinations that we have?
That's the topic we can discuss in the future. And the first step, a very first step, is to identify where those locations are.
Okay. And follow-up if I may. And your preferences that they get left on the sidewalks, is that correct? And not into a designated parking space?
Because right now, the model works, we encourage people to use it and give them more like flexibility and freedom, not to constrain them to, like let them only pick up and drop off at certain location because we don't know like if that's the true demands. If that answers your question?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Alderwoman Kelly.
You have fat tires. Do you have any other types of bikes in the fleet?
Yes. We will have e-bicycle and then we have trike and then fat tire bike. And then I think side-by-side bike.
Are they, sorry if I could follow up. Are they all well-versed for any type of terrain? Because we have lots of different types of trails here in Nashua.
Gotcha. So it needs to be tested first because those Special ADA bikes need to be rented out with certain like number and departments, if that makes sense.
How do the batteries stay charged?
Sorry?
How do the batteries stay charged on the bike?
So we have a solar panel here to charge the bike. So if without the charge, the battery can last for two months.
Other questions?
Do you make cell phones?
Nice try.
Nice try.
Any other questions? Alderman Lopez.
Does your company, is it looking at any other types of vehicles?
You mean vehicles, you mean?
There's a surprising demand for kayaks downtown. Nobody's renting them out.
I will let our co-founder know. It might be a good business plan. Yeah. Thank you so much, everyone.
If you rent kayaks, do people throw them out of the river?
And I just wanted to take a minute, I'm going to take the mouse now, just to show you a few examples of what parking, we envision parking will look like, because that is a common question that we have. So a little photoshopping here, but, so I went around Nashua and looked at different locations and, you know, this is typically appears is that the furniture zone along Main Street and that's where we will be encouraging and educating people to safely park their bikes. So out of the pedestrian way, not blocking any, any activity that is normally going on on the sidewalk. You know, we have furniture zones. We've got like up here against the fence that marks off outdoor dining. This is the trail down to the Nashua River Rail Trail. So a little, you know, not quite wide enough for a car, but perfect for bikes to park. Nashua Library, there happened to be some bikes there when I was there that day. So I thought, hey, that'd be great just to pop a Veoride bike right next to it. So I mean, we have bikes out on the sidewalks. We have them in public places. This is just another bike joining that, that other bikes out there. And then the other thing that I wanted to touch on quickly, because I know we have short time, is we are actively working with the Department of Public Works to get some bike lanes striped out, out in, about in Nashua. And so here's a map. It's a little tough to read and I'm sorry. But the, the green lines here where we actually do have striped bike lanes. We also have just a few segments that are signed but not actually striped. So they're signed as bike lanes and they have wide shoulders, but they don't have like the icons in the pavement that show it's a bike lane. And then the red lines are where we are working with DPW to have bike lanes put in. They're actively working on this. They want to make sure that it's done safely and in accordance with sound engineering practices and all the standards that go with that. But the goal here is, the blue lines that you see are existing trails. So, you know, if you were to take a bike, you could come up the Air or the Nashua River Rail Trail from Air, go up Countryside, come all the way along West Hollis, hit the trails in Mine Falls Park and be downtown. And that's kind of the goal of all of these little trails that we've done. So we have one from Nashua North High School along Cheyenne Drive, a nice quiet, not real busy traffic-wise road that would connect to the park and get you into the system and get you downtown. And just for a little few close-up images of what that might look like, again, I did go out and take some photos. And so here's where I said that we actually have bike lanes on West Hollis Street. And you can see there's no markings in the pavement, but it is a bike lane. And then some sections where we don't have bike lanes yet, but we've got some nice wide shoulders. That was some, some great forethought by DPW when they redid this road and gave us some nice wide shoulders for future planning. And again, Countryside, that we think that we can accommodate bike lanes. And then Main Street, Main Street will be a challenge, but we know that that's where bikes are going to end up. It's our downtown core and we want to make the road safe and accessible for these bikes. So again, you know, we've got some opportunities, we've got some challenges. And that's what DPW is working on with us to solve these challenges and make a nice safe route for these bikes to go on. We don't just want to put them out there and not have a plan for where they can go safely. Thank you. Any questions? Yes.
What happens if we consistently find bikes in places that are blocking parking or on the sidewalk?
Then we can set up no parking zones. That's built into the app, and, and it will penalize financially people who park in the no parking zones, am I right, Candace? Thank you. So definitely, you know, and, and we are, our goal is to not set up these no parking zones initially unless, as Candace mentioned, like in front of the fire department, locations like that, but we kind of want to see where they end up before we start imposing restrictions on where they can go.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Great, thank you so much for your time.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there a motion? Alderman Wiltshire.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we're adjourned at seven fifteen.